Can the people at home hear me?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Right, I guess I think we're just about ready to begin.
Mr. City Manager, I don't know if you want to start or not, if we want to start off now or not. Would you not have Councilwoman Lutz or Councilman Johnson, which I'm sure that Councilman Johnson would be just a little bit late getting here? And of course, Councilman Gamroth will be on line with you. I believe Councilmember Pollak may not be with us tonight as she's out of town on business. So I think that covers everything. If you're ready to begin, we can go ahead and do so.
Sounds good to me, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, then we'll start off with the tennis courts, Natrona County School District's proposal. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everybody. I apologize for the remote participation this evening. We are pleased to have the school district as our guest this evening to talk to us about a proposal that involves the construction of some tennis courts in our community and more specifically in Highland Park, as you will see here soon on your exhibit that will be displayed momentarily. The basic idea that the school district guests will elaborate upon is that indeed the school district will construct and/or rehabilitate 10 courts located at the Highland Park facility, which is the park that is adjacent to the rec center and also adjacent to Beverly Street, wherein council will recall that we have four tennis courts in existence currently. And indeed, those tennis courts are in need of some reconstruction as we speak. If indeed, we are willing to provide the land and the facilities located herein, the district is willing to construct six new courts and reconstruct the existing four courts, as well as the parking lot that's in the area as well. Furthermore, they anticipate installing a bathroom/concession facility in the area adjacent to the courts and pertinent pathways and seating potentially as well. I would tell you that this is a wonderful partnership opportunity if it can come together in this regard. And I would also say that this would require an MOU to be put into place that would allow for this partnership to be put together. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to give council the opportunity to hear the school district's proposal, as well as answer and ask any questions that you might have. And, you know, if council's comfortable, allow us to move forward to finish creating an MOU that puts all this into place, take some of the formal steps that are necessary, you know, including an appraisal of the area in question, and move forward if council sees fit. And so with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd be pleased to turn the floor over to our friends from the school district and see what questions are generated.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Ray Catalier. I'm the chairman of the Natrona County School District's School Board. And as Mr. Napier said, we are interested in pursuing a combined tennis facility. And the location that makes the most sense to us right now, if the city's willing, would be that Highland Park location. It's centrally located between the two large high schools here in Casper. And it enables the city to take a few tennis courts out of their inventory, and we can add a few. It's been in the district's plan for a number of years to have tennis courts at each high school, each major high school. But we would like to pursue combining them as a cost savings measure and then as a kind of a boon to our community of a facility that, you know, our tennis seasons are relatively short, so the facility would be open to the public outside of the school district's hours of practice and then competition. So outside of that, we anticipate that the facility would be open to the public. It would just be a great location that hopefully we could attract some tournaments to the community and things of that nature. And can answer any questions that anyone might have or provide more detail.
Mr. Catalier, just to clarify, so you'll be redoing the four existing courts and then adding an additional six for a total of 10, correct?
Correct, that's the plan as we see it right now.
Okay.
It's worth about the paper that it's written on, but, you know, that's how we see it proceeding.
Okay. Councilman Nell.
I have a question for Carter. Are you still on, I'm assuming? Mr. City Manager. Have we lost him? Carter, can you hear me?
I can, sorry, it took a little bit to raise me in here.
That's all right. My question is for you. This seems like a fantastic idea for the schools and for us. So we've done an impact study. Is there any negative to this at all? Any negativity whatsoever? If there is, I guess I'm not seeing it, so I wanted to ask. Was there a downside?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, I really don't see a downside with respect to the partnership as has been described. In addition to this, you know, the district is willing to, you know, maintain the property that they would inhabit, which would include mowing and, you know, watering of any of those turf areas that would remain. The parking lot is in need of repair, and they're willing to, you know, take ownership and reconstruct the parking lot as needed. The public gets to retain access, as was described. And, you know, hopefully, we can work out some pickleball striping, because certainly the rec center and the senior center have a lot of interest in that. I think it's a win-win. So finding a downside has been a real challenge for me as I've thought about this partnership.
Councilwoman Engbretson.
So just to make clear, you're just asking for the city for the land to be able to do this, correct?
Correct.
Councilman Cathy.
Do you have any concerns about drainage where those bottom four courts are? Because if I look at this contour map right, everything all the way around there drains right into those four tennis courts.
So we've got the, I believe this exhibit shows the floodway, the hatch, the crosshatch in between the four to the west and the two to the east. And the city has some existing storm facilities through there. So it would be a concern, but I think that we can construct around it.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure you had looked at that, because, yeah.
Right.
Very good.
That was one of the first things we looked at. I understand that the soils aren't the best over there and that it is that floodway, but it is, like we said, the benefits seem to outweigh the drawbacks.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Gamroth.
Thank you. I don't recall when it was, but I do remember a representative from like the local tennis association or somebody has approached us this year. And they were stating that our current tennis infrastructure doesn't allow for state tournaments and things of that nature. And so is it fair to assume that with this added capacity, we would be able to host those state tournaments? And if so, do you have any idea what sort of economic impact that may have? Thank you.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Gamroth. I appreciate the question. This has been also a driving impetus, if you will, with regard to considering something like this also. We do need work on our tennis infrastructure. Without a doubt, certainly existing courts that we have right now are in disrepair and, you know, probably not as appealing as it relates to attracting some of the larger tournaments and whatnot. I would suggest that even with the addition of the 10 courts that, you know, the addition/reconstruction of the 10 courts that we're going to see over there in Highland Park, we will still need to look at some of our existing courts and doing some repairs and reconstruction as well. For a state tournament, we are talking about needing 24 playing surfaces. And I think with everything that potentially we could look at that we have in existence and with regard to the scope that's being proposed here tonight, we could cobble together, I believe, those surfaces, but it would take some work. Washington Park, for example, is one that probably has the highest degree of concern, if you will, that we would need to focus on. But I would invite council to at least have the bug in your ear that some dollars be considered potentially for some rework that might be needed on some of our existing courts that would remain in the city's hands so that we can position ourselves very competitively for the state tournament to be had in our community. I think with the addition of these courts, we will position ourselves fairly well for regional tournaments, and that is positive as well. But I think the thing we really ought to talk about more seriously as this project comes into focus is the possibility of attracting an additional state tournament here in Casper.
Councilman Nell.
Sir, is there a timeline if you are to receive city approval? Is there a specific time this would start or be finished by?
We have a very tentative goal of being, having this facility operational by not this coming fall tennis season, but the 22, 23 school year, so the fall of 2022. Is that correct? Yeah. It might be a little bit accelerated. There's certainly a lot of dominoes that have to fall fairly quickly for us to make that happen, but that is our goal as of right now.
Good to know, thanks.
Any other questions from anybody? All right, thanks, sir. Mr. City Manager, do you need direction from us then on whether to move forward or not?
Mr. Mayor, that would be helpful. The direction that we're looking for is, you know, if you like the concept and are comfortable with the idea that this partnership creates, we do need to get to work and complete some effort on some of the formal steps that need to be taken in order to appropriately put this partnership together and get this transaction, so to speak, completed.
Okay, so are we good with the manager moving forward with this project? Okay. Looks like we got thumbs up across the board, Mr. City Mayor.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll move on to the fiscal year 2022 budget amendment number one. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. We are at the point in our new fiscal year where an amendment is necessary. This is a very appropriate step to take when we close out the old fiscal year and, you know, get headlong into the new fiscal year. Unlike, or excuse me, much like many amendments that you have participated in the past, this is an exercise that we need to do to carry forward our projects and so forth and purchases and services that we've contracted with into the new fiscal year that weren't completed from the old fiscal year. Hence the reason the number looks rather big for what it is that you're being asked to consider. And by the way, that formal consideration would take place this evening, unless council has, you know, homework that needs to be done or concerns or whatever the case may be. Another additional piece that this amendment would consider would be that of carrying forward some of the directives that council asked for during the budget hearings back in May. Some of that would include that final sales tax payment that we need to make to the state that would end our obligation with them as far as that repayment is concerned. That was one of the bigger ones. We need the ledger work to have taken place and basically ratify the actions that we took to provide employees a one-time payment by virtue of the new fiscal year. Those are also a part of this amendment, and again, consistent with what it is that council directed back during the budget hearings of a few months ago. I've asked Jill to put together some of the flesh on the bones, if you will, with respect to this amendment for tonight. Feel free to ask her any questions that you have. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to defer the floor.
Okay, thank you. Jill?
Mayor, councilmembers. Actually, the city manager put this together very nicely. There are three sections to this budget amendment. The first one does look at POs, which were not completed by the end of the fiscal year. If we don't reappropriate those, then there won't be enough money to finish them. So that is one piece. There is also a bunch of projects which have been started or have been getting ready to start. So those projects, again, were already budgeted in the previous fiscal year. They would expire at the end of that fiscal year, so we need to reappropriate them in order to continue them for this fiscal year. Those are net neutral, budget neutral. Because they've already been appropriated, we're just basically reappropriating them. There isn't any new dollars that are going to be spent on those. There are a few new asks. Again, as the city manager alluded to, there are those three that we discussed in the budget workshop. So we have the one-time payment for the employees. We have an additional $100,000 going into the revolving loan fund in order to be able to meet our reserves for that fund. And then we also have the sales tax payment to the state of Wyoming. There are a few other items which are detailed in the memo. They are not huge dollars. One of them is for MPO projects, which were originally done in, or requested in 2020. They did not reappropriate them in 2021, so it's going to be a new request. However, they are grant-funded, so there really is no impact to our current funding. So those are the main items. Was there any questions that you all had for me?
Councilman Nell.
So Carter, can you still hear?
Yep.
Okay, good. So when we met concerning the repayment to the state, I believe a decision was made by this council to not pay it in full because it's interest-free. And a matter of fact, I recollect it like it was yesterday, that our recommendation was to not pay it off because we're not paying interest in it, yet we're being asked to pay the entire thing off now, which is contrary to what this council had decided. So can you advise where the change came from?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Nell, I certainly recall that being a part of the conversation without a doubt. And I believed that the direction from council was to go ahead and pay it off despite the fact that it had, you know, a zero percentage interest rate, if you will. So if I misunderstood that, it was an honest mistake, and we can certainly turn that back and not make that payment. But I did not understand the direction in that way, Councilman.
Councilwoman Engbretson.
I guess what I do remember was a few of us were all for about not paying. And I specifically remember, like, the younger generation. You know, it's just like we had said that it was interest-free, so we didn't need to just make the full payment, pay some. And then I do remember Carter and a few others said, debt's bad, just pay it off now. And so, but honestly, other than that, I don't remember what our indecision was about paying it off now versus waiting.
Mr. City Manager, is there a way that we can look back and find out exactly what direction we gave? Because I don't think any of us really remember.
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to resend that clip from the budget meeting and have you review that, if that would help.
Is this time sensitive for us to pass this, though? Or, I guess is a question, or do we have time to look back and review that?
Mr. Mayor, I guess what I would recommend, if council would like to consider that aspect of this amendment further, I would suggest that you, and this sounds kind of wonky, but I would suggest that we amend the amendment, withhold that piece for now, and carry forward with the rest of the amendment in that we do have a number of things that have to be held up if we can't pass the bulk of the amendment this evening. So I don't see that being a deal killer necessarily as far as the overall amendment is concerned. But without a doubt, we can certainly further discuss that one piece pertaining to the repayment of the sales tax obligation.
All right, Councilman Nell.
Carter, it's probably something we can deal with right now. The council's sitting here, and I'm not opposed to paying it. I just wanted to make sure we weren't going against council wishes. And I remember Councilwoman Pollak bringing it up and the fact that it was interest-free. And I remember most of us agreeing not to pay it in full because of that. But that's just my recollection. It doesn't mean it's correct. But there's enough of us here, I guess, to make that decision either way. So I just want to make sure we're doing protocol correctly, if you will.
Mr. City Manager, I guess the question I would have, is it more appropriate for us to go back to what we originally, review what we originally decided? Or would it be all right to move forward with a decision tonight? And I guess I could go to Mr. Henley, too.
Mr. Mayor, I think council has the authority to go either way. If council is comfortable going ahead and moving forward with the repayment, Councilman Nell is right, there is quorum in place to go ahead and, you know, basically confirm what we've prepared for the amendment this evening. If council would rather table that one piece by virtue of an amendment motion to the budget amendment, that is absolutely within your purview to do that as well. So either way, we're comfortable either way.
Councilman Johnson.
Well, in the end, we're paying the same amount. Whether you pay it over time or you pay it all day, it's all... I don't care either way, honestly.
Did you have something, Jill?
Do you want to come forward? So this is from the meeting minutes, and it says, "Mr. City Manager, discussed paying back to the state the tax overpayment all at once. As opposed to spreading it over the next few years, council agreed to pay it all back at once."
Okay, there you go. Okay, any other questions on? All right. Any other questions on the budget amendment itself? All right, thank you, Jill. All right, Mr. City Manager, we'll pay it all back tonight. All right, we'll move on to fleet vehicle purchases. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We have a couple of major purchases that are being authorized by consent this evening. We wanted to be sure that you had the opportunity to ask some questions and so forth. If indeed, the conversations back during the, you know, the budgeting process and the capital request process, you know, those details were, you know, murky or whatever from, because it has been several weeks now. We do have folks here tonight that we'll, you know, that we have here for the purpose of providing any information with regard to some of those larger fleet purchases that you're considering on a formal basis tonight. Sanitation, of course, leads the pack in terms of some of those costs that we're asking you to approve. And, you know, Cindy and Andrew are certainly capable of answering those questions. And Dan, of course, from Fleet, as our director, can help there as well. So really, this is brought forward for the purpose of making sure you're comfortable, because this is a larger-than-normal rolling stock purchase. And we would invite any of those questions, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cathy.
The one question I had, and it involves several of the vehicles, I noticed there were no trade allowances for those. Are we keeping those vehicles to use as backups in case of failures? Or were those vehicles just so hailed out that everybody kind of laughed when you said, "Give me a trade-in"?
Good evening, Councilman Cathy. I believe there are a few in there that do have some trades. There are some that are just in addition to the fleets, some new programs that Cindy hasn't stated up at Solid Waste with the Murph Building and some other properties that she has going on up there. So there were some addition twos. There was also one that was a GovDeals sale, that we're just going to sell a surplus. And I do think we had two of them that were trade-ins.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, apparently we're good with all this. Do you have anything else on this topic?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to procedure for filing a council member vacancy. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you all know, we regretfully were informed that Councilwoman Lutz would be leaving the city council with respect to a move out of the county that her family will be undertaking. And accordingly, Mr. Mayor, you asked for a proposal as it relates to, you know, the process we need to follow, if you will, pertaining to appealing to the public in order to replace Councilwoman Lutz in, you know, pursuant to her move. We do have a proposal for you to consider this evening, and we would gladly take any direction that you would have that might be different than what we're proposing at this point in time. I've asked Pete to walk you through the elements of that proposal, and we would gladly, you know, retract that proposal if indeed we could keep Councilwoman Lutz. If that can be on the table.
Said on the table? It's not on the table.
So I would defer to Mr. Myers.
All right, Mr. Myers.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, the proposal we have out there would effectively open this as an application process. When a vacancy appears, the other members, the remaining members of council actually select the new council member from among of applicants. Previously, the way we've done this is we've taken a very simple job application, effectively a little bit of information about their eligibility to serve on the council, their residency, along with a basic resume. We asked them to, we asked the candidates to see if they're willing to have the resume published, made it public so that everyone can see their candidacy, as would be typical of an elected official. We're proposing that the application process will be open tomorrow. That would be open until September 3rd, that council would then have a chance to review and then actually interview the candidates on the 15th. Some things that come up in previous years was we might actually need a spillover date moving to the 16th as well. And so I guess the first question of the night is to make sure that council finds that schedule acceptable. If we can do it that way, then the new council member will be sworn in on the 21st of September. Secondary question would be the application process itself. Obviously, we traditionally do a very simple written application, just the resume, effectively. And if that's sufficient, then we will continue to do that. Secondly, the interview process in previous times has been a simple 10-minute... Secondly, the interview process in previous times has been a simple 10-minute set of pre-questions that are actually handed to the council member in advance, five questions. The traditional questions that we've asked are simply, tell us about yourself, explain what you, why you would want to serve on the council, describe your qualifications and how they would benefit the city, how are your feelings about running for reelection, in this case reelection in 2022, and tell us about your availability to serve as far as the time commitments for all the meetings and such. Is, if council is, finds that all acceptable, then we will fire up the process as we have in previous times and run it in that manner. But of course, now would be the time to decide if there's additional questions or concerns or issues that would need to be brought up so that we could add that to the application process.
And Pete, this is the exact same process we used last go-around, correct? We just, obviously, we've changed the dates, but other than that, everything's the same. Okay. Vice Mayor Pacheco.
That was just going to say that this is the same process we've used probably since, I mean, I think when Sean and I've been on, first got on council, but we've replaced several different ones. And it's worked really well. The process works well. I think it's fair, especially they all get same, they ask the same question, and we're able to go through that process. And generally, generally, it's only been about seven to 15 people will apply, is what I've seen. It kind of depends upon the interest of it, but it's very fair and done well, and these guys do, have been doing this for a long time, so it's been working. So I'm in favor of it, and I like the timetable as well. I think it's really good. And I'd be willing to retract it as well if Kristin decides to stay.
Councilman Kathy.
The only comment I would have is I was the last one appointed, so look what you got.
Oh, that's right, never mind.
We should rethink this. Is there any changes that you would make to it, though, since you came through the process?
Basically, those pretty well sum it up as far as, you know, we learn about the person, we learn why they're interested, we learn whether they're interested in trying to run again or not. So it pretty well covers the gambit.
And the interviews are public?
Yes.
Not done in executive, because a lot of people, I know there were some people in the past that were concerned, they wanted the interviews to be private, but this is a public office, so your interviews are public, everything's public. There's no secrets.
How long of a term do you have left?
Sixteen months.
Sixteen, oh, okay.
Near and a half, yeah.
Sixteen months, and I guess it needs to be mentioned, this is for Ward 1 vacancy.
And if I remember right, they have to live there, and they have to have been a resident for a year, don't they?
They have to be a resident. I couldn't swear to the year term. I'll have to get back to you on that one.
I think they just have to live in the ward.
And in response to Councilman Johnson's point, traditionally, the applications are done in public, but then council, the other council members will retreat to an executive session to discuss their selection process.
Yep. Okay. Any other discussion on this? Everybody okay with the process that would open tomorrow? And the timeline looks good to everybody?
I might ask one additional question, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
One other question was, is it your presumption that we would schedule every member, every candidate as soon as they are deemed to be eligible? So just give them an application time saying, all right, once, as opposed to council would, the alternative would be if council wanted to review the applications, then not interview everyone?
No.
Interview everyone.
Well, everybody that applies.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Okay. Anything else on that, Mr. City Manager?
No, sir. And, you know, if council has any feedback, we would take it, and you're right, we would start that process tomorrow.
Okay.
Yep.
Do you have anything you want to add?
No, no.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Mayor, if someone's listening and they're interested in this, where do they get their application? Where do they, where do they pick it up to apply?
Mr. Mayor, the applications will be put online, and so we'll be posting that along with basic procedures for how to apply, basic requirements, along with, we have a tool built already which would allow for people to confirm that they do live in the ward, because the ward boundaries, the ward warrant especially, are rather complicated. So, so, yeah, that should be going out to, presumably tomorrow morning, as soon as we're ready.
To the city website.
To the city website and as a press release, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you, Pete. All right, gender review, Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, I don't really have anything other than what's been talked about this evening, so I don't believe I have anything to add on this portion.
Okay, well, then we'll stand down for about 25 minutes. You got to be educated. We begin this evening, I would like to remind everyone to silence their cell phones at this time. I now call the August 17th, 2021 regular council meeting to order. Chair would entertain a motion to by minute action excuse the absence of Councilmember Pollock.
So.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Nell, second by Councilman Johnson. Please cast your vote. It's all right. Kyle gave us a thumbs.
He gave, he gave us thumbs.
And please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passed.
Council meetings are also televised and can be viewed on cable channel 192. Please join the Vice Mayor in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair to entertain a motion to approve by minute action the minutes of the August 3rd, 2021 regular council meeting is published in the Casper Star Tribune on August 11th, 2021.
No moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Engbretson, second by Councilman Kathy. Any amendments? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With Councilmember Lutz abstaining, motion passed.
Chair to entertain a motion to approve by minute action the minutes of the August 3rd, 2021 executive session.
No moved.
Second.
Moved by Vice Mayor Pacheco, second by Councilman Nell. Any amendments? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With Councilmember Lutz's abstention noted, motion passed.
The chair to entertain a motion to approve by minute action the August 17th, 2021 bills and claims is audited by City Manager Napier.
No moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Engbretson, second by Councilman Johnson. Any abstention or nay votes? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
This evening, we have Ms. Christine Robinson here representing the Jason's Friends Foundation. I will be reading and presenting her with the proclamation acknowledging Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Ms. Robinson, would you like to share more about this topic? You can come up here, yes.
Hi, Christine Robinson, Executive Director for Jason's Friends Foundation, and I'm here to accept the proclamation. Childhood Cancer Awareness Month is September of each year, and as Jason's Friends supports Wyoming families here in Wyoming that have a child with cancer, because there is no local treatment places for them to get treated, so we help with everything to get them where they need to go. So thank you for this opportunity.
Okay, if you'd like to come up here, I'll read the proclamation. Proclamation, whereas cancer is the number-one cause of death by disease among children, on average, about 16% of children die within five years of diagnosis. And whereas the overall incidence of childhood cancer is on the increase, averaging a 0.7% increase per year since 1975. And one in 285 children will develop cancer before the age of 20. 16,850 children per year were expected to be diagnosed in 2020 with cancer. And whereas cancer affects children and young adults differently as their bodies are still developing, and the cancer treatments themselves can possibly pose serious, long-term problems to their maturing systems and organs. And whereas the average cost associated with childhood cancer in 2018 for one child was $833,000 for medical cost and lost parental wages. One in four families lose more than 40% of their annual household income as a result of childhood cancer treatment-related work disruption. Jason's Friends Foundation helps to meet this critical need by providing financial assistance to these struggling families. Whereas September is observed as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Now, therefore, I, Stephen K. Freel, Mayor of the City of Casper, Wyoming, do hereby proclaim September 2021 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in this community and encourage our citizens to support programs that give assistance to the victims of pediatric cancer and their families. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand to cause the official seal of the City of Casper, Wyoming to be affixed as first day of September 2021, even though we're not quite there yet. Okay, now is the time we invite anyone in the audience who wishes to speak with the council to come forward. As stated on the first page of the agenda, we ask the following. Please state your name and address, direct all questions and comments to the mayor and only the mayor. No personal attacks on staff or council will be tolerated. Council will not respond to personnel matters, these will be referred to our city manager. Questions posed by speakers may or may not be responded to by council members. Presentations will be limited to five minutes, and duplication of speakers will not be allowed, nor will time extensions be permitted. Please note that public hearings and ordinances each have their own comment period, so please hold your comments on those items until we reach them. Is there anyone that would like to address council?
Good evening, council members. Want to say thank you, appreciate your time and all the hard work you guys do, first and foremost. I know it's not a high-paying job, but you do important work. With that being said, I'm going to relate a quick story to you. I can kind of draw it out, but I want to get to the meat, more importantly than anything. My name is Eric Paulson. I live at 1732 West Ridge Circle, Casper, Wyoming, 82604. This is my daughter, Carston Davies. I own and operate a security company in town that employs about 20 people. I also have been employed at Casper Children's Dental Clinic for the last 12 to 13 years, working for my father and also getting to take part, being part of a lot of kids' lives. It's something I take a lot of pride in. So with that being said, I'll get straight to my story. It started on Pride Month, Pride Celebration. Ray, I actually believe that your niece was with us as well. She was with me and my daughter. We decided to go celebrate Pride down at the event. It was great. She got to walk around, do some things with her friends. I handed out water as part of my security duties. I kind of just carry that stuff around with me 90% of the time anyway, because I care about the protection of our community. After that, we went and got some ice cream, then we decided to go to the swimming pool over at Edna's Kimball, the one with the water slides. We had a great day. Everything went really well. A couple days later, I became made aware of a Facebook post where a certain individual who works for the city on the Equality Board decided to defame me, take pictures of me, my truck, and my license plate, and posted them all over Facebook, saying I was taking pictures of little children and accusing me of being a child predator. It wasn't just posted to one page, it was posted to several pages, several community pages. I was later confronted by two large angry white guys out at Alkova for the Fourth of July for these exact comments, accusing me of being a child predator. I tried to address these concerns with said individual. I tried to reach out to her through private means and ask her to remove her posts, see if we could clarify anything, and she was obstinate, refused to take anything down, refused to have any kind of conversation with me or a mediator that was in between the two of us. Essentially, she blackmailed me and told me if I did not give her my phone, she wasn't going to remove the Facebook posts. Furthermore, it's disgusting that she never reached out to the police, she never reached out to anyone else to try to address this situation. She could have came up to me, I was there for an hour and a half with my daughter at the pool. This woman's name is Shannon O'Quinn. She works on your Equality Board. She is the same person who I saw shame half of the council members when she came in here to talk to you guys, saying, "We don't understand what it's like to be judged by our looks or by who we love. You have a malfeasant actor working for you on this Equality Board. She does not practice what she preaches. She actually does quite the opposite. She manipulates, and she lies, and she stretches the truth, and I have all the proof that you guys could need." I tried to address this through lawyers, but sadly, actually, I can't even say sadly. I, God bless the First Amendment. I believe strongly in it. Okay, if this is what the hand that's dealt to me, I know my character and my actions will live up and show that I'm not the person she portrayed me to be. But the fact that she actually represents and comes and speaks to you guys is disgusting to me. She is not a good actor. She lies. She will defame a person's name and character. I worked with children. I was almost physically assaulted. I worked for a security company whose job is to make sure that people are safe in this city and this state. And she's willing to defame my name without any evidence or even talking to me, discovery, I believe, is what they called in legal terms. She defamed me, she hurt my name, and I just wanted to make you guys aware of it. I know this is a personal issue, but, I mean, Ray, you can ask your own niece about it. Sienna, she was there with us at the pool. If you guys have any further questions or need further proof on all of this, I've brought provided materials with me showing the posts and everything that she blasted me all over Facebook for. I appreciate your time. Thank you for listening to me, and I hope this brings delight so we can get some good, honest people in here to represent the LGBT community. I don't think having malfeasant actors representing them is going to serve to improve the relations in Casper. Thank you for your time.
Any questions from anyone? Okay, thank you.
Hello.
Good evening.
My name's Shannon O'Quinn, and I was given a heads-up that this person would be here today, and I appreciate that. I came here today to let you know that if I were placed back in that situation and I witnessed what I saw that day, I would respond in the exact same way. This man arrived alone, confirmed by the Mike Cedar pool staff. He sat by the stairs to the slide and videoed. And I'm not sure if you're familiar with Mike Cedar, but where the slide stairs are, there's really no view of the pool. It's very little, it's limited by the children walking up to go up and down the slide. When he left, he did not wave or say goodbye to anyone. He walked to the parking lot alone, lit a cigarette, pulled his truck up outside of the snack bar. That's when the pool staff called the police, but he left before the police could get there. You should know that after it happened and before I took action, I called a dear friend of mine who is a police officer and explained what I saw in the situation. He told me I should absolutely call the non-emergency police number and share the license plate. He said if he's a resident... He said if he's a registered sex offender, there's something they can do. He said if he's not, then there's nothing they can do. And I did exactly what my friend, the officer, instructed. A day or two later, a person posted on Facebook that a man in a silver truck was videoing children. I posted the pictures of this man in his silver truck to one page and said, "This just happened at Mike Cedar. If this was the man, call the police." My motivation was to help other parents and children avoid the same situation. Once again, based on what I saw that day, if I were placed in that same position and witnessed what I witnessed, I would do exactly what I did that day. I did what any concerned parent or citizen would do, and I stand by it. What I'm here to tell you is that that situation had absolutely nothing to do with my role on the Inclusion Committee. I want to quickly give you my background as it concerns to the support of LGBTQ people. For years, I donated design work to the National LGBT Chamber of Commerce in Washington, DC, as they were getting started and off the ground. I have donated design work to the Matthew Shepard Foundation. I have partnered and worked with the NGLCC for five years to help open LGBT businesses around the country and around the globe. I applied and was accepted as a member of the Casper LGBTQ Advisory Committee, and I'm very proud of the work we are doing and the time we have devoted to this committee. This past month, I helped organize an event in Casper with Amber from council, legislator Pat Sweeney, Matthew Shepard's father, Dennis Shepard, and Justin Nelson, the president and co-founder of the LGBT Chamber in Washington, DC. You know I'm a single mom, and I've put myself in a pretty vulnerable position by doing what I did that day. But I'm here to tell you that I am not afraid to do the right thing. I do it on the council, I mean, I do it on the committee, and I did it that day at Mike Cedar Park, and I stand by it. So I just want to thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to council?
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is David Ellis, seven-twenty-four North Jefferson, and I just wanted to say I love the city and I appreciate each and every one of you and the efforts that you do. And so I have a book for you all, and I believe there's nine, and then the tenth. We'll go to your replacement.
There is nine total. There'll be eight after my absence, and then nine once they replace me.
Okay, so they'll be out on the lobby waiting for you. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, David.
Councilman Nell.
David? What are the books? What are the, I mean...
Question, very good question. A view from Center Street, and it's a history of Casper, Wyoming, and this one isn't open or else I'd done through it. And I'd like to say thank you for helping create the history, you know, of our future. So it's a pretty cool book. They're... Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Pacheco.
Hold on, David. Hold on. So I've known David a long time, seen him in the community. He's always gracious and always comes up to me and thanks me for the work that I've done on council, and so he's just been always just a kind soul here in our community, going around and spreading his positivity and joy. So I appreciate it, and I appreciate you coming up here and doing that, David, and I appreciate you just being positive in our community and being out there and doing those things. So, thanks, David.
And thank you for the book.
Yes, sir.
Is there anyone else who would like to address council? Okay, please read the consent agenda title.
Establishing September seventh, two thousand and twenty-one is the public hearing date for consideration of the transfer retail liquor license number eleven from JJBBLD. Pardon me, that's probably LLC. Doing Business as Party Time Liquor, located at thirteen thirty-five South McKinley to Hayden and Laughlin, Inc., doing business as Local Liquor and Lounge, located at forty-one twenty, Centennial Hills, Suite two hundred.
The chair would entertain a motion to, by minute, action established public hearing date just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Cathy, second by Councilman Johnson. Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
And now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of local assessment district number one fifty-seven. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
Thank you, Mayor. Two exhibits. Exhibit number one, correspondence from Andrew Beamer to J. Carter Napier dated July twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-one, and exhibit number two, affidavit of publication is published in the Casper Star Tribune dated August five, two thousand and twenty-one.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, do you have a report?
I do, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the final step with regard to this important partnership and assessment district that's been created for these improvements. Now that the final costs are in and we are beyond estimation stages, if you will, we are prepared to move into this phase of the creation of the assessment district. We initially estimated that the lineal foot cost of the work would be in the neighborhood of ninety-six dollars and twenty-nine cents. However, again, with respect to the final costs that we've collected and tabulated, we are prepared to suggest that as a part of this ordinance process, that lineal foot cost is actually ninety-four dollars and twenty cents, and accordingly need to, you know, go through the step of the process to memorialize that cost and, of course, build the billing around those figures after all. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Council now listen to public comment. Public hearing comments are limited to five minutes and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. At this time, I'd ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the issues involving local assessment district number one fifty-seven to please approach the lectern. All right, at this time, I'd ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to the issues involving local assessment district number one fifty-seven to please approach the lectern. There being no one to speak for or against the issues involving local assessment district number one fifty-seven, I now declare the public hearing closed. Please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance ratifying all actions previously taken concerning City of Casper, Wyoming, local assessment district number one fifty-seven, confirming the proceedings, assessment role and assessment therefore assessing the amounts in said role of the property in said district, creating a lien therefore and prescribing the priority therefore directing certification of said role by the city clerk and transmittal thereof to the city treasurer prescribing notice that said assessment shall be paid and the terms thereof, providing for the payment of said assessment, creating a special and a separate fund therefore, providing for the collection of delinquent assessments, and prescribing various details concerning said provisions.
The chair would entertain a motion to approve on first reading, the ordinance just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Engbretson, second by Councilman Cathy. Discussion? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
And now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two budget amendment number one. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Exhibit number one, correspondence from Jill Johnson to J. Carter Napier dated August two, two thousand and twenty-one, and exhibit number two, affidavit of publication is published in the Casper Star Tribune dated August five, two thousand and twenty-one.
Mr. City Manager, do you have a report?
Mr. Mayor, we had the opportunity to go over a lot of these details in pre-meeting just prior to your formal consideration this evening. We are asking council to consider an amendment in the amount of just over thirty-three million dollars. The vast majority and lion's share of this is to appropriately close out the old fiscal year, move into the new fiscal year with respect to projects and goods and services that were not completed in the previous fiscal year, and account for appropriately in the new fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-two. And with that, Mr. Mayor, that would conclude my report.
Okay. Council now listen to public comment. Public hearing comments are limited to five minutes and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. At this time, I'd ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two budget amendment number one to please approach the lectern. And at this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two budget amendment number one to please approach the lectern. There being no one to speak for or against fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two budget amendment number one, I now declare the public hearing closed. The chair would entertain a motion to, by resolution authorized, the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two budget amendment number one.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Vice Mayor Pacheco, second by Councilman Johnson. Discussion? Councilman Cathy.
I would just like to reiterate what the city manager said, is that basically the bulk of this money is, well, is for projects that were not completed in the FY twenty-one budget. And so these aren't new projects, these are carryover projects, and in government speak, you have to make a budget amendment to move that money from the twenty-one budget to the twenty-two budget to continue on and finish up the work that was not completed and not paid for. So we are not dipping into reserves, this money is already allocated, and this is government speak for what needs to be done in your household budget even. Just wanted to reiterate that, to make sure everybody understood.
Okay. Any further discussion? Any amendments? Okay, please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
And now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of the transfer of ownership of retail liquor license number twenty-eight from three oh seven Bar LLC, Doing Business as Three Oh Seven Bar, to Sunrise Entertainment, or Sunrise Center Entertainment, Doing Business as Let It Roll. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
Thank you, Mayor. We have four exhibits. Exhibit number one, correspondence from Fleur Tremmel to J. Carter Napier dated August two, two thousand and twenty-one. Exhibit number two, affidavit of publication is published in the Casper Star Tribune dated August ten, two thousand and twenty-one. Exhibit number three, affidavit of website publication is published on the City of Casper website dated August two, two thousand and twenty-one. And exhibit number four, liquor license application filed July nineteen, two thousand and twenty-one.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, do you have a report?
I have nothing further to add, Your Honor.
Okay. Council now listen to public comment. Public hearing comments are limited to five minutes and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. At this time, I wish, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the transfer of ownership of retail liquor license number twenty-eight to please approach the lectern. All right, at this time, I'd ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to the transfer of ownership of retail liquor license number twenty-eight to please approach the lectern. There being no one to speak for or against the transfer of ownership of retail liquor license number twenty-eight, I now declare the public hearing closed. The chair would entertain a motion to, by minute, action authorized the transfer of ownership of retail liquor license number twenty-eight.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Engbretson, second by Councilman Johnson. Any discussion? Any amendments? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
Please read the ordinances on third reading by title only.
Item ten A one, an ordinance amending certain sections of chapter fifteen point oh four of the Casper Municipal Code and adopting the two thousand and twenty-one edition of the International Building Code. Item ten A two, an ordinance amending certain sections of chapter fifteen point oh two of the Casper Municipal Code and adopting the two thousand and twenty-one edition of the International Residential Code. Item ten A three, an ordinance amending certain sections of chapter fifteen point two oh of the Casper Municipal Code and adopting the two thousand and twenty-one edition of the International Mechanical Code. Item ten A four, an ordinance amending certain sections of chapter fifteen point two four of the Casper Municipal Code and adopting the two thousand and twenty-one edition of the International Plumbing Code. Item ten A five, an ordinance amending certain sections of chapter fifteen point one eight of the Casper Municipal Code and adopting the two thousand and twenty-one edition of the International Fuel Gas Code. Item ten A six, an ordinance amending section fifteen point oh six point zero two zero of the Casper Municipal Code and adopting the two thousand and twenty-one edition of the International Existing Building Code. And item ten A seven, an ordinance amending certain sections of chapter fifteen point four oh of the Casper Municipal Code and adopting the two thousand and twenty-one edition of the International Fire Code.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve on third reading, the ordinance just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Nell, second by Councilwoman Lutes. Council now listen to public comment. Public comments are limited to five minutes and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. Okay, any discussion? Any amendments? Councilman Nell.
I just want to be clear to the public that we actually have to do this. We're not trying to add more codes to the city when it comes to building. This is a requirement, once it's adopted by the state, that we literally have no choice but to do it as well, so.
Okay, any further discussion? Or amendments? Okay, please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
Please read the ordinance on third reading by title only.
An ordinance updating and amending certain sections of chapter five point oh eight of the Casper Municipal Code.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve on third reading, the ordinance just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Nell, second by Councilman Cathy. Council now listen to public comment. Public comments are limited to five minutes and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. Any amendments? Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
For the next item, I'm going to abstain, so I will turn it over to Vice Mayor Pacheco to handle this portion of it.
You don't need that. You don't need that. Oh, I don't, do I? My apologies, Mayor.
If you need some power, though, go ahead.
I needed it on the first time. My apologies. I've never done this before, right? Please read the ordinance on second reading by title only.
An ordinance approving, an ordinance approving a zone change of the back nine addition.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve on second reading, the ordinance just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Lutes, second by Councilmember Johnson. Council now listen to public comment. Public comments are limited to five minutes and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. Okay, discussion? Any amendments? Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With Councilmember Engbretson and Mayor Freel abstaining, motion passed.
To be fair, I needed it the first time.
Please read the ordinance on second reading by title only.
An ordinance approving a vacation, replat subdivision agreement, and zone change for the Trails West Estates number five edition subdivision in the City of Casper, Wyoming.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve on second reading, the ordinance just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Johnson, second by Councilman Cathy. Council now listen to public comment. Public comments are limited to five minutes and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. Public comments are limited to five minutes and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. Any amendments? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With Councilmember Engbretson and Mayor Freel abstaining, motion passed.
Please read the consent resolutions by title only.
Item 12A1, a contract with Nelson Eygaard for the complete streets and ordinance plan. Item 12A2, a contract with Civil Engineering Professionals, Inc. for the East Yellowstone Intersection Improvement Study. Item 12A3, a contract amendment with Tool Design Group for the Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan Update. Item 12A4, a lease agreement with St. Anthony's Tri Parish Catholic School. Item 12A5, a lease agreement with Casper Figure Skating Club. Item 12A6, an outside city water service agreement with James P. Hagman and Kira K. Hagman. Item 12A7, the right-of-way use agreement with advanced communication technology. And Item 12A8, a procurement of goods for the grit removal system with Keenan Supply.
The chair would entertain a motion to adopt the consent resolutions just written.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Engbretson, second by Councilman Johnson. Mr. City Manager, would you like to make any comments on any of those items?
I have nothing to add, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any abstention or nay votes? And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
Please read the consent minute action titles.
Item 13A1, the purchase of a small area mower from Midland Implement. Item 13A2, the purchase of two half-ton pickups from Greiner. Item 13A3, the purchase of a tandem axle truck from CMI TCO. Item 13A4, the purchase of a delivery truck from Floyd's Truck. Item 13A5, a purchase of a pickup with tilt bed from Greiner. Item 13A6, a purchase of a transport truck from CMI TCO. Item 13A7, a purchase of a side-loading sanitation truck from CMI TCO. And Item 13A7, a reappointment, or pardon me, appointment of Casper Housing Authority Board member Rhonda Zimmerman.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent minute action agenda items just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Engbretson, second by Councilwoman Lutz. Any abstention or nay votes? Please cast your vote.
Now I really did it. It's your fault. That's angry. Okay. Councilwoman Gamroth, I missed your vote. Thank you. I hit the switch, too. Thank you.
And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
Okay, at this time, we ask council members to bring forward relevant concerns or items of interest. Councilwoman Engbretson.
Nothing for me tonight, thank you.
Councilman Johnson.
Nothing other than good luck to Kristen, and it was a pleasure to serve with you on the council. And maybe, your new city needs a new council member. Other than that, I may or may not be here next week. I'll let you know. That's all I got.
Councilman Gamroth.
Thank you. I have a couple things this week. First off, I think we should explore looking into some better mics for the council meeting chamber. I could tell the city manager was struggling earlier. I've been struggling for weeks. And if, you know, COVID cases are rising in our community and we're having more city staff out and whatnot, I think it's really important for us to be able to hear everything that's being said. And there's times I'm really struggling to hear specific comments on this side. So I think that's something that's definitely worth exploring, you know, especially now, since it seems like we may be utilizing more Zoom meetings and stuff within the city. I attended a DDA board meeting last Wednesday, and we discussed some potential solutions to the continued vandalism and unruly behavior taking place. Some of those suggestions was a possible fundraising campaign for additional and/or higher-quality cameras, but I was really glad to see it looks like Boys and Girls Club is stepping up and doing a social on that night to maybe offer some alternative activities. So I'm very thankful for that, to see some of those organizations in our community that serve that population step in and see if they can offer something that might be able to curb, you know, the unwanted behavior occurring down there. And then I also wanted to thank the Rotary Club of Casper for the creation of the Boulder Park. I believe the grand reveal will be this weekend at River Fest and the Duck Derby. If you haven't made the, I haven't been over there to see it yet, but I saw some great pictures being reported. So just wanted to thank the Rotary Club of Casper. I encourage people to go down there Saturday and see it. And if that's something cool that you enjoy, you know, it's right next to Crossroads Park, which is another Rotary Club of Casper project. And so if you like those projects, if you like what Rotary Club does in the community, I would encourage you to go to the event on Saturday and purchase a raffle ticket or buy one online beforehand. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilman Nell.
Thank you. This last week, the Planning and Zoning, I guess, group appointed a new planning and zoning, I don't know what we call them, commissioner? So we appointed a new one, and we welcome her to the Planning and Zoning Commission. She is new to our town from, but she has plenty of experience being on, actually sitting on a city council prior and Planning and Zoning Commission, so it'll be nice to see what she brings to the board. I want to thank personally Pete Maxwell, who has done a tremendous justice to this community by bringing in a lot of stuff for people to see and participate in. And this last weekend at the concerts, he donated every ounce of the general admission tickets for both shows to the Make-A-Wish Foundation, which is near and dear to me as they've actually done things with my own family when my son survived his cancer. So thank you, Pete, for all you've done for the community this year. And also, Thursday night, went to ZZ Top up at Ford Wyoming Center, and I checked the numbers, and it looks like there were only 100 seats empty in the entire place. And that was a lot of fun to watch them three old boys make a lot of music. So, good things going on at the Ford Wyoming Center. Check their schedule. Hopefully you can participate in some of the upcoming events that they have. And that is all I have, sir.
Councilman Cathy.
Well, I may steal part of your thunder, but we made a Joint Powers Water Board meeting today, and we want to thank all of the citizens of Casper and the surrounding areas that get their water through regional water for conserving water. We were, before we asked people to cut back, we were at about 25 million gallons a day, which is summer irrigation. Winter flow is normally around 15 million gallons, which we're able to take from the wellfields. During this period of conservation, we were in that 15 to 18 million range. So we were able to sustain water levels quite well for household use, and we now do have shipments coming in. It is being railed in from Chicago to Billings and trucked in to Casper. And so as of today, all of the irrigation restrictions are lifted. But again, on behalf of the Regional Water Board and the City of Casper, want to thank everybody for the water conservation.
All right. Do you have anything else?
Anything else I would like to bring back up, and I don't remember where we discussed it, maybe for a work session, but the replacement of curbs and gutters. Normally, I believe that as long as they're like a parkway situation, the sidewalk is the responsibility of the landowner, and the curb and gutter is responsibility of the street. But I don't think we have ever officially made any kind of statements where it is the combination sidewalk, curb, and gutter. And if replacements have to be made, should the city be splitting that cost somehow with the landowner? So that's something I'd like to bring up.
Okay. Do you have anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Mr. City Manager, could we add that on to a work session item or have some follow-up on that?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Pacheco.
Thank you. Just one thing, and I'm just gonna say, it's been an honor and joy to serve with, with Councilmember Lutz. She's been a fantastic representative, representing her ward. She was a fantastic vice mayor, she did a great job. We're gonna be sorely missed on council. I appreciated your pragmatism, your thoughtfulness on issues. Your never knee-jerk reaction on things, you always were thoughtful in how you did that. And I really appreciate that type of governing that we need so badly in our, in our, in our country especially. So hopefully, our loss is Landers' gain. And I know a couple members of, are on city council up there in Lander. You might be a nice representative up there. So be safe in, with your family, and God bless you, okay?
Councilwoman Lutz.
So, obviously, first thing, I have been honored from day one that Ward One selected me as a representative, and I have, I hope that I have made them happy and made their voices heard on my time on council. Obviously, it's very bittersweet to leave. We're very excited for this opportunity in Lander, but we will absolutely miss our lives in Casper. And I have had the honor of serving not only with the first council, which now also included Charlie Powell, Bob Hopkins, and Mike Huber, but then also the council that's sitting in front of you. The city staff has been nothing short of amazing as far as supporting not only myself but the council, you know, any requests that we have, any information we need, any problems with iPads. There's never been a time where the city has not been just phenomenal to support this council. And so on that, I am sad to go, but excited for this opportunity, and I wish the person that holds this seat next all of the luck, and good luck to you all selecting that individual. And if anyone in Ward One that is considering applying has any questions for me regarding what this seat looks like, I will gladly take those calls and help you in any way that I can. Thank you all.
Okay. Well, I hate to see you go, and I want to thank you for the great year of 2020, and being my sidekick through all of that. But I certainly appreciate all the time that we had, where we could certainly bounce the play of the day off, being as there was no playbook for last year at all, and make sure that we made the right decision for the city as we moved along. So you will be definitely missed, as everybody has stated here, and, you know, you do have one last chance to stick around, and long-distance relationships work, so you could finish your term out, and I'm sure your husband would be fine with that. So, no, I certainly appreciate working with you, and hopefully we'll find just as good of a replacement. Might be hard to do, though. So with that in mind, I'm gonna put out there, the council will be working with city staff to carry out the process to fill the vacancy created by Councilmember Lutz's resignation. Application materials and further information will be posted to the City of Casper's website tomorrow morning, and applications will be accepted from tomorrow, August 18th through September 3rd of 2021. So just to give a real quick rundown, starting tomorrow, August 18th, the application period will open up. It will close on September 3rd of 2021, and eligible applicants, that material will then be provided to council members. On the 7th of September, we will do interviews of candidates on the 15th, and we will swear in whoever the new council member will be. They'll take their oath to office on September 21st. This is for Ward One, so I'll read a long, brief description, description of Ward One. But Ward One occupies a north-to-south strip that runs through the center of the city. The ward is roughly 1.5 miles wide, and it includes all of North Casper, all of downtown, most of the Big Tree neighborhood, most of Casper College, and all of the city's southernmost neighborhoods, including those to the south of Goodstein Drive. Though its borders are somewhat irregular, it can be described roughly by starting with Poplar Street, which runs along its western edge. Its northern edge is the northern end of the Casper city limits. Its northeastern corner is at the intersection of Bryanstock Trail and K Street. From there, heading south, its eastern border follows Bryanstock Trail, south to Second Street, and then west to Kenwood, then south to Fourth Street, then south along Conwell. Its southern border is the southern Casper city limits. So if that's clear as mud, if you live in that area, you're in Ward One and eligible to apply for this vacancy. The next meeting of the Casper, of the city council will be a work session to be held at 4:30 PM Tuesday, August 24th, 2021, in the council meeting room, and a regular council meeting to be held at 6:00 PM Tuesday, September 7th, 2021, in the council chambers. A notice of an executive session to take place at this date and during this meeting was given. We have a matter to discuss regarding land acquisition. Therefore, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session at the conclusion of that executive session and reconvene this regular meeting solely for purposes of adjournment of this regular meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Nell, second by Councilwoman Engbretson. There being a majority of members present in a motion to adjourn into an executive session having been moved and seconded, and that motion requiring a two-thirds majority of council present, please cast your votes. Oh, yeah, yeah, that's all right. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
A greater than two-thirds majority of council present voted in favor of the motion. We are hereby adjourned into executive session.